Was there anything added to the agenda? I didn't see anything and I couldn't figure out where you went in to see any updates.
It doesn't show separate updates. So, the one thing that was added to the agenda was the Cognia reinstatement costs. That's Cognia is the
The what?
Cognia reinstatement costs.
Okay, that's the insurance, right?
No, that's accreditation that Bab was talking about. We'll explain it when we get there. It's pretty, you pay and they give you your stickers back. Oh, look at how cute you are all festive. That'd be very Halloweeny.
How about Halloweeny?
Yes, I like it. Yep, I was waiting for Bab to get settled. I'll now call the regular meeting of the Hazel Park Board of Education to order on October 23rd, 2023, 5:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Baldwin?
Here.
Fortress?
Here.
Hinton?
Here.
LeFranboys? Rete? Rice? Here. Nagy? If I could have everyone stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome. Can I get an approval on the agenda? Or motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Roll call?
Fortress? Yes. LeFranboys?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Rete?
Oh, I wanted to pull something out. Can I pull something out? Not now? When we get there? Okay, so, we have a special order of business. First up is Knights of Columbus. Welcome.
Good evening. I am the Grand Knight of the Knights of Columbus. And we do a Tootsie Roll drive and a bottle and can drive every spring. And we want to donate $1,000 to Jardon Vocational School for their needs.
Yay! Thank you so much. So, Dr. Pacazin is here.
How are you? Thank you so much. It's nice to see you.
Nice to see you too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Okay, let's get a picture.
For anyone that doesn't know, Knights of Columbus supports us every year, all the time. We have members that show up to our events consistently. So, gentlemen, thank you. Does anybody else?
And I want to say that I know many of these gentlemen from when I was very young. And their service was at the church I attended. So, it's nice to see them still in action, out there working to better our community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next order of business is AP students. Dr. Cooper? Yes. Okay, I will move my little pen out here. I'm going to ask the board members
I'm going to ask the board members to come on out if you could. And if we have the students here, we're going to ask them to come up. So, Hazel Park is super excited about many things, but we're also very excited about our AP students. And those of you who have been around for a little while, you know that we have worked really hard to add our AP classes to the school district and want to celebrate our kids that have gotten three fours or fives on their AP tests. And this would be from last year. And I, one of the bugs, plugs that I would say, or bugs, but I meant plugs, that I would say out there to everyone is that you should try to have your students at least try one, one AP class, to get out there, enjoy it, have that opportunity. We have AP art, AP psychology, AP sciences, AP English. So, it's really exciting, the things that are being put together at the high school. So, the first person I have is Riley Cruz for her advanced placement score. The next person is Morgan Lee. She's taking pictures for the school district right now. Yay, Morgan! Simon Stimek. Riley Hallis. Mom, you want to come up and get it? For sure. Congratulations, Mom, on your, Riley doing a great job.
She's in marching band, so she's
And we love, love, love. You might want to shake everybody's hand and celebrate like she does. Love the fact that she's out there doing marching band.
Always a great station.
I don't think I saw her either. Sarah Atkins. She graduated. Yeah, she's probably at college. Jenna DeBrow. Sarah Griffiths. Eliah Hall. Victoria Musarelli. Katie Norris. Laura Labozian. Zaboziyan. Let me say it again. Laura Zaboziyan. Joseph Zanzias? You know him? And I think we hit everybody. All right, congratulations. We're really proud of our kids. I would just say one more thing before we get started. I know some people may say, "Why don't you do that at the end of the year before the kids leave?" Because we don't get the scores in time before they leave. So, we'll continue to celebrate them and send it off and let them know that we thought about them today.
Okay, our next order of business is the new staff, new elementary staff.
And I'm going to stay seated and maybe the board members might want to welcome. I think there's a couple of them here, but we're going to read off everybody. So, at Hoover Elementary, Erica Jones. Mary Miller at Hoover. Both of those are teachers. Erica and Mary are new teachers. Autumn Robarge. She is a para at Hoover. Alexandra Brew is a teacher at Webb. And Grace, I want to make sure I say it right. Grace Nataski? Is that how you say Grace? Grace, you're here. Come on up and say hello. Did I say it right, Grace? How do you say it? Nataski. Nataski, I'll never forget that. So, come on in.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Welcome. She's a special education teacher for us at Webb. Colton Weatherstone Jr., who's a sub at Webb. Leah Wright, who is a para at Webb. Erica Brechbold, who is a teacher at United Oaks, new teacher. Elizabeth Dover, who's a new teacher at United Oaks. Oh, sorry, para at United Oaks. Mark Assad, a new para at United Oaks. Is he here? Oh, come up and say hello. Come up and say hello. You're, I believe you're a lunch para for her, aren't you? Breakfast and lunch. So, thank you for joining us. We love that, that you're here with us. Whitney Pierce at United Oaks, new teacher. On to Webster, Amy Betty. Michaela Khan. Julian Clark. Lironda Denham. Antonia Fletcher. Kaitlin Hoy. We have a new custodian, Gregory Johnson at Webster. Welcome. More Webster. Webster's full of new people. Laura Lapaine. Elizabeth Long. Brittany Masek. Carly Obryk. Melanie Ross. Daria Sanchez Brown. Shayna Solari. Cheryl Sousa. Renee Strobel. And Joyce Strong. This is our new staff at the elementary and we will bring in, next time, our staff at the junior high and high school.
Welcome to all those new staff members. Junior high representatives. Are we, do we have them here? Anyone from the junior high? No?
Oh.
High school representatives? Come on up.
Hi, my name is Christy Gardner and I'm currently a senior at Hazel Park High School.
Hi, my name's Jeremiah Kemp. I'm a current junior at the high school. I'll be just talking about the current events that's at the high school right now. First, I'll talk about the marching band on the state preliminary this Saturday at Grand ledge. The Hazel Park Promenade took students to EMU.
Next, we want to talk a little bit about Hazel Park Drama, Hazel Park Drama's production of Clue, happening November 16th through 17th at 7:00 PM. Tickets are $12 for adults and 10 for senior citizens and students. And we would like to personally invite all of the board members.
Can you say the dates again? I thought it was the 17th.
16th and 17th.
Okay.
16, 17, 18.
Got it. Thank you.
Oh, he's here. He's going to cost us money. I just know it.
Last Saturday was our senior football game and celebrating 100 years of football. The PSATs just, just got completed digitally a couple of weeks ago. I took it. It was very sufficient. I really did like it. Um, and yeah.
Going back to drama, this past Saturday, I had the wonderful opportunity of attending Eastern Michigan University's Drama Day and we got to watch them perform Sweet Charity. It was an incredible event and I definitely learned a lot. So, I'm very grateful for that opportunity. Also, college advisor, Mr. Billock, took select students to U of M this past week, which I also attended. And it was a very educational experience, getting to see the school and eating in the cafeteria like a college student. It was a really fun experience. Senior soccer night was a couple of weeks ago. We got to honor all of our seniors in soccer as well as volleyball and marching band. Homecoming was also a couple of weeks ago. That was a huge success with over 350 students in attendance. It was a really fun time. Halloween is a half day at the high school and we are allowed to wear costumes, which is super fun. The restrictions for costumes are outlined in the newsletter. And winter sports tryouts are soon. Wrestling, girls and boys basketball, and swim.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. That is great. They took a whole bunch of my stuff off my end of the day.
Thank you. Do we have any representatives from Advantage? Okay, seeing none, it's time for the United Oaks presentation. I also had a PowerPoint that went with this.
Did you send it?
Yes, I did. Yep.
You can do it.
All right, so my name is Brooke Barnett. I am the Community School Coordinator at United Oaks. So, community schools, they represent a place-based strategy in which schools partner with community agencies and allocate resources to provide an integrated focus on academics, health, and social services, youth and community development, and community engagement. Next slide, please. So, the community schools model operates under four pillars. The four pillars are family and community engagement, integrated student supports, expanded learning time and opportunities, and collaborative leadership. As a hub of its neighborhood, United Oaks focuses on students' basic needs and build trusting relationships with students and their families by offering a range of services that include basic need support, connections to critical resources, academic engagement experiences, and parent engagement. Next slide, please. So, tonight, we've come to talk to you about our after-school programming, which falls under the expanded and enriched learning time and opportunities. Expanded learning time includes after-school, weekend, and summer programs, provides additional academic instruction, individualized academic support, enrichment activities, and learning opportunities that emphasize real-world learning and community problem solving. So, as one of our many after-school programs, we have our Board Games Club. It occurred today. We're coming directly from that. So, it happens every Monday from 3:20 to 4:30. Over 30 students attend this club. Members from one of our community partners, Franklin Wright Settlements, provides the club programming and several others to our students. The purpose of the Board Game Club is to provide students with a chance to experience a fun and relaxing environment during which time they will be able to work on developing strategies, strengthening logic, and developing relationships. The club values teamwork, friendly competition, and a willingness to try new things. We regularly have over 30 students attend this club. Next slide, please. So, on Tuesdays, several of our teachers provide card club. Card club at United Oaks is a welcoming environment for students to play cards, teach each other new games, and learn from one another. These games involve students practicing math strategies, including counting, addition, subtraction, and comparing numbers. Card clubs help teach students the importance of teamwork, encouraging others to try their hardest and do their best. With each individual's own perspective on games and game rules, it opens up the floor for everyone to be a teacher and a learner. Card club is a means for us to enjoy spending time together, furthering our education, and most importantly, to have fun. On Tuesday, tutoring, Tuesday and Thursday, tutoring has begun. We started our first round of tutoring the second week of October. It's the first of three rounds. Students are, with identified academic needs in the areas of reading and math, participate in regular after-school tutoring sessions twice a week. We have 10 teachers that provide tutoring services and about 50 students during this first round that participate every week. Students are grouped by their particular needs that have been identified through testing data. We utilize testing data as well as classroom performance to measure academic improvement. We also may check in with the child's teacher to see how they're doing in class post-tutoring. On Wednesday, we have Performing Arts Club from 3:20 to 4:30. This is another one of the clubs that is provided by our community partner, Franklin Wright Settlements. During club time, students get the opportunity to engage in song, dance, and theatrical activities. The Performing Arts Club helps to instill confidence and increase self-esteem as well as providing an outlet for the students to express themselves in a safe and positive manner.
Brooke, can I interrupt for just a second? Is the individual that's doing that right behind you wanting to say something?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to
All right. Just wanted to double check.
So, on Wednesdays, we also have Craft Club with Ms. Demus and Ms. Irwin. This club is provided to our smaller ones there at the school. It ranges from kindergarten all the way up to second grade. During Craft Club, they read a book and then they have a craft after each book essentially and they create their own. There is no set craft for them to do. They just kind of come up with their own. Ms. Demus is also doing a writing club on Tuesdays and Thursdays. They're, right now, they are focusing on listening to a fairy tale and then creating one of their own fairy tales. All right, on Wednesday, we also have the YMCA Club, the Sportport Club. Our community partner YMCA provides this club to us. Every week, there's 30 slots become available on Sunday night and it is first come, first served. This club is at capacity every week, usually by 10 o'clock on Sunday night. This club provides access to sport sampling, free play, and free sport equipment to kids so they can play in their own neighborhoods. For the past few weeks, students have begun to learn the foundational skills of football and soccer. Next slide, please. Our student council meets once a week and is overseen by two of our teachers, Ms. Burns and Ms. Perry. Student Council gives students the opportunity to develop leadership skills and has grown significantly over the past year. Last year, they started with 10 students. Now, they have over 30. The student council works on a variety of service projects that benefit both the internal United Oaks community and the Hazel Park community. Last year, students made Thanksgiving placemats for local seniors at the American House. They also made teacher gifts for teachers during last year's Teacher Appreciation Week. They will be holding their very first student council election of the year in the coming weeks. And on Friday, we have our art club that meets from 3:20 to 4:30. This is also provided by our community champion, Franklin Wright Settlements. During club time, students have the opportunity to work on a multitude of different art projects, which do get to go home with them. The art club allows our students a creative outlet to not only express their thoughts and feelings, but to interact with their environment through a different medium to relieve stress. So, lastly, I would like to recognize some of the ones that have come here tonight. So, right behind the So, this is Ms. Lovely. She oversees the Franklin Wright Club, so three different clubs throughout the week. And then after her, we have Ms. Rayz. She oversees the Card Club on Tuesdays and Thursdays with Mrs. Shivers. So, Ms. Fletcher does tutoring for us on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Mrs. LaBrake also does tutoring for us. So Yes.
Our two little young ladies that came today. Right, you wish ones which clubs were you in? Our club, here's our club with Ms. Lovely. What's your favorite art?
Excellent, excellent. All right, Mrs. Little, Ms. Natalie. Ms. Natalie, what is it that you do?
My art.
You go to my art. I remember. What kind of things you like to do with my art?
Art, poetry.
Did you say lovely also? You might have said lovely mother. Okay, I heard that. What's your favorite art?
Free time.
Free time. So, we are just very, very, very grateful to have the individuals that we do that will take the time to do these after-school programs. You guys are invaluable. Thank you, thank you, thank you, every day, quite honestly. I mean, it's a great place for the kids to be and I think
Can you tell everyone who you are? Yeah, we didn't get your name.
You serve as United Oaks.
Thank you.
And if I could just make a comment, the community school grant that we received from the United Way has made a world of difference to United Oaks. And it's provided an opportunity to be a building led by the team of teachers at the building, to talk about the wants and needs of their students as well as the activities after school that would motivate them, engage them in beautiful, beautiful changes in that building and parent participation. We are awaiting, as we've said, on the United Way federal grant to see if we can move Hoover and United Oaks into the same process. So, again, it works with a teacher leadership team that really, really talks about where we need to go for improvement in our school. So, thank you, ladies. It's a lot of work, but fantastic outcomes for our kids. So, thank you. I do want to mention to the group as well as to our board that Mrs. Gressley unfortunately was ill today, which is why she's not here or she would have been here in a heartbeat.
Any other comments? On behalf of the board, thank you for all your hard work. I'm sure you put extra time and thought into all these activities and I know that means the world to the kids. All right, next, we have public comment. Is there anyone wishing to speak for public comment at this time? Seeing none, I'm going to skip over that whole thing. Next, Consent Agenda. Can I get a motion?
There's some items that I want to pull out of the Consent Agenda. I have some questions.
Did you want a motion to pull certain ones out?
Well, if I pull anything out, we just have to vote on them all separately, right?
The ones that you pull out. If you end up pulling a ton out, then it just is easy to go separate, but
I had a question on the conferences.
So, you'd like to pull which? D, E, G, or the board member F? D is the teacher conference request? F is the board member conference request? G is the middle school conference?
Definitely it's G.
Okay.
And then I had some questions on some of the I had a question on a termination letter. And then
So, you want to pull, pull C, personnel recommendations removed?
Well, we can't talk about personnels individually. Okay.
No, it's just a general question. It's not about an employee.
Okay.
And then Um, and then, um, I don't, it doesn't look like it's on here. Oh, the Business Office Director.
Sweet.
There was no attachment, so I wasn't sure why it was on the Consent Agenda.
So you're taking out G?
Yeah.
And what was the other one?
Um, E.
Okay. And the other one? That's Office Director, E, okay. Just E and G?
Was there anybody else?
Did we vote on that last one?
No, you just had to make a specific motion for it.
Okay, well, so I'm, I'd like to make a motion. Is there anybody else that's pulling anything out?
I am.
What would you like to pull out?
I would like to pull out Peyton Potteet, so that I can vote on the rest of the agenda.
Personnel is removed already.
Okay, cool, yeah.
We can talk, but all that gets down, moved down to new business.
And then can I pull, we're, it's wrong, well, can I pull out, um, the finance committee or is this a small one?
Okay, my suggestion is, is that we just go, put it all down to new business and go from one, one to one.
Okay, sounds good.
At this point, it probably would be better.
So are we, do we need to make a motion, or can we just change that?
Um, we need to withdraw the consent motion.
Nobody made a motion for consent.
Oh, then we can just start, we make a motion on each one.
Okey doke.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, so the first item will be approval of meeting minutes. Can I get a motion?
There was just approval, is to make a motion, then discussion. Yep.
So.
Do you have a motion? We need to approve a motion.
I make a motion to approve the cons.
The board meeting minutes.
Yeah, we can just do them in order, so we'll start with A, separate.
Give it a second.
Uh, did somebody make a motion?
Yep, Heidi did.
Oh, I'm sorry, second? From Debbie, thank you.
I'll start getting it.
Discussion?
That if you had a suggestion, then yes.
Okay, so, um, just that Monica had to, had a previous appointment, had to be, should have been in the minutes.
Um, it, it certainly can, if that's the board's wish. It doesn't have to be a leaving for a committee meeting. So we certainly can, if that, if it's the board's wishes, we can put it in there, it's no problem. So we would have to go back, if that's what we're gonna do.
You need to change your motion.
Change your motion to include a change for the time that Monica left the meeting.
I make a motion to approve the.
To amend my motion?
To amend my motion for approval of the minutes to, for adjustment to the Finance Committee to note that Monica left the meeting early.
And then your second has to agree to that, to change that.
My second.
Okay? Do we need discussion? Roll call? Please?
Yes.
LeFromboyes? Pinton?
Yes.
Rete? Rice?
No.
Baldwin?
Yes.
All right, next, we have Monthly Financial. Can I get a motion? Nobody?
We have to have, so, how this goes, is you have to have a motion for everyone, just like a normal, because we pulled so many off, so someone needs to, if they would like to approve the financial report, say, "I'd like to make a motion to approve the monthly financial reports for September." Well, it's in the, if you look at your agenda, it's right here, and you would go down the Consent Agenda items. Thank you.
Support. Discussion?
I do have a question. I was wondering where on here, I know it says payroll. I'm looking at the, um, the summary of the Treasury Report. Where on payroll would we see the items that are paid via, um, expenses paid through payroll? Is that the EDU staff payments?
Jason, would you come to the, um, mic, please, to respond?
Did you hear the question? I don't, just make sure.
Yes, so I did hear the question, I have to look back to see.
Absolutely.
So the EDU staff payment is the, um, third-party subsidy we have. So in, within the payroll, you see, uh, everything that you see here is your taxes, your, um, uh, payments to your deferred comp plans, like your 403Bs, 457s. So for the most part, most of this is your taxes withholdings, your penser, your garnish, and stuff like that.
Okay, but where would I see expenses paid through payroll on that?
It's, it's going to be combined, combined into the number underneath payroll for the six hundred nine thousand seven twenty-five, it's in those numbers.
Okay, but it's not necessarily wages, so it's deceiving. Is there a way to get that separated?
If, if the board so desires, we can separate that out, but.
Jason, does that need to be separated out?
It is the, it would be predicated on the board's determination on what they would like to see separated, what isn't. Is it required? Um, I would have to probably consult our attorneys.
So may I make a suggestion, Heidi, is that we?
I just think it's.
If we, we take it to the auditor and take it back to the Finance Committee and then back to the board, so Jason can properly speak to the auditor.
Any other discussion?
Is that okay with the board?
Yes, I, I guess, I mean, it's the same stuff, I don't, I don't understand why it's consolidated in its payroll, it makes our payroll look higher than it actually is, and you can't determine anything, so, all right?
We'll have that back to, at the next meeting, Jamie will make a note of it, and we will speak to the auditors.
Any other discussion? Debbie, was that your caveat you wanted to change? You wanted to pull it out, right?
No, I, I would pull it, but it wasn't. But I wasn't that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Roll call, please. LeFromboyes?
Yes.
Pinton?
Yes.
Fortress?
No.
Rete?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Item C, Personnel, can I get a motion, please?
Make a motion to accept the first hour of the negotiations.
Can I get a second?
Some support?
Support?
Don't we have to pull out?
Oh, no.
She made a motion.
She made a motion to accept them as is.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Um, I do have a question. Um, there was a termination letter in there, and I was just kind of curious. It said something about turning in, um, their equipment and that their payroll check was already released. I just was curious if it was normal practice to release payroll, their final payroll check before we get their, um, computer and stuff back?
I would say years ago, um, no, uh, but we cannot withhold payroll under the law. Yeah, you can't do that.
I know you can't withhold payroll, but if they have their stuff.
You can't, you still can't withhold it. Our attorney probably could answer that too, but sorry.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah. We used to, right before, you would do automatic deposit, even in the summertime, teachers would have to turn their stuff in, and then you'd give them their last check, but you can't do that anymore.
Any other discussion? Roll call? LeFromboyes?
Yes.
Pinton?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Rete?
Yes.
Rice? Baldwin?
Yes.
Conference request, can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve that the conference request is written.
Any support? Discussion? Roll call? Fortress?
Yes.
Rete? Pinton?
Yes.
LeFromboyes? Rice? Baldwin?
Yes.
Item E, Business Office Director Position, can I get a motion?
There was nothing there.
There was not a motion, unfortunately, this should have been brought down. It was to introduce our new business director, so perhaps we can have that, move that to new business, and then Mr. Zernas can come up and.
Uh, okay, then moving on to, um, item F, can I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve board member training as written.
Any support?
Support?
Discussion? Roll call? Fortress?
Yes.
Pinton?
Yes.
LeFromboyes?
Yes.
Rete?
Yes.
Rice? Baldwin?
Yes.
Item G, AMLE Conference, can I get a motion, please?
Make a motion to improve the AMLE Conference as written.
Support. Let me do a, um, since we're doing it this way, let me go do a discussion. The AMLE Conference is the National Middle School Conference, and, um, we attended nine years ago when I first came, and we feel it's a good time to send, uh, two middle school leaders to look at potential scheduling differences, things that we could do differently that are going on across the country, and this is the national conference in order to do that. So, uh, we're really excited to offer this opportunity and to make sure that we can look at other options for scheduling and learning in our middle school.
Are you gonna discuss?
That is discussion, so.
Okay, okay. Um, I just had a question, it said lodging shared, and then it had two separate amounts underneath it, so I was. Nice.
Uh, that's something going on in that room, not out here. Uh, Dr. Domich, could you speak to that?
So essentially, I'm trying to, if it's shared, there was a shared lodging because Washington DC is very expensive, so we were trying to be fiscally smart. So it is shared lodging for three nights, but I just split it in half so it would be a per-person amount.
Okay.
Does that make, is that all?
Was it shared lodging at their request?
No, it was not. I was ju, essentially just trying to make sure that we were being very, again, fiscally smart because the.
I believe when we went years ago, we shared lodging as well because of the cost.
Okay, I'm just, I mean, I just, if it was a male and a female going, we wouldn't require them to share lodging. I don't think that we should require them to share lodging.
Who would the price be?
Per person, it would be when we looked, the last time we looked, because hotels are at a premium there because of the conference, so it would be about a thousand dollars a person for three nights.
Well, it says six fifty is the lodging shared. Right. So it would be another thirteen hundred dollars to the trip. Correct. Yes. So the two people get their own room. There's only two people attending. There's two females attending.
I would prefer to be, but how many did they have?
Okay, I'll, I'll adjust my vote.
Okay, so we have to go back?
Yep.
Second to agree, uh, to adjust that and to increase the, her lodging.
I make a motion, um, I make a motion to amend my motion to, um, approve the AMLE meeting with the adjustment to, um, each participant attending having their own room. Is that sufficient?
Did you want to support again?
Yep, support.
Any other discussion?
Unless they choose to stay together, I would think, I mean, if they want to share only, it's great, but if they don't, they don't have to.
Well, we're, we're, we've lost our moment of discussion, and we're on to voting.
Sorry.
How did you lose your moment of discussion?
She's second. We already talked, we already did our discussion.
Well, she supported the new amendment.
Okay.
Now we vote.
Okay. I, so we have more discussion. Roll call, please. Fortress?
Yes.
Pinton?
Yes.
LeFromboyes?
Yes.
Rete?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to new business, do we want to put, um, the, um, new business director at the front? I think we should, okay. Um, I guess, do we need a motion for that?
No, we've already approved it, so if we could, if it would be okay, Madam Vice President, if we could bring, uh, Mr. Zernas up to introduce our new business manager, who we're super excited about, and our new business manager up to the podium. He's had a very hard day.
Good evening again. So I'm here to announce our new business director has been filled by Keith Bishop from Crosswell Lexington Schools. He was previously the Chief Financial Officer there. I'll turn it over to Keith to say.
Good evening, Board. Uh, it's nice to meet everyone here. Um, I'm excited to start at Hazel Park. I'm bringing about just nearly ten years of experience in my former position as Chief Financial Officer, and I'm excited to start working here and, and being a part of this district.
We are so excited to be here.
I appreciate that, thank you. And I would be willing to entertain any questions too, if there are.
Any questions or comments? Yeah, welcome, nice to meet you, we're happy to have you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, our next, uh, item under new business, National Principal, Principals Month. Can I get a motion?
I move the Board of Education to approve the resolution of recogni, recognition of the National Principals Month.
Support? I probably have something here, yes. Do I have a resolution? I don't.
I think I have it, let me see.
Okay, go for it. Dr. Croupy? You want to read that? Oh, maybe I do it. I have it, thank you.
Okay, get ready.
Two thousand twenty-three National Principals Month, whereas energetic and inspiring school leadership is essential to Michigan schools in order to prepare students for success, both during their pre-K through twelve years and beyond, and whereas principals are entrusted with the educational development of young people and serve as educational visionaries, instructional leaders, assessment experts, community builders, facility managers, special programs administrators, and guardians of various legal, contractual, and policy mandates and initiatives, and whereas principals set the academic tone for their schools and work collaboratively with teachers and parents to develop and implement a clear mission, high curriculum standards, and performance goals, and whereas principals play a vital role in the success of students by creating school environments that facilitate great teaching and learning, as well as continuous school improvement, and whereas much of the success of the pre-K to twelve students can be attributed to principals who act as the liaison between the school and the community it serves, ensuring that parents in the community are aware of student and school achievements, and whereas the celebration of Principals Month honors elementary, middle, and high school principals and recognizes the importance of school leadership in ensuring every child has access to a high-quality education, and whereas during this month, we join educators, parents, and student through, students throughout Michigan to raise awareness of the importance of educational leadership and recognize and thank the hard-working principals in Michigan schools who set exemplary standards of service. Now therefore be it resolved, Hazel Park Schools hereby proclaims October twenty twenty-three as Principals Month.
So our resolution says Michigan, but I wanted to add, it's Hazel Park. We have the best principals, we know they work hard every day and have the students' best interests in their hearts and in their minds, and they go above and beyond.
May I also just make a quick comment?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I've been a lot of places and still am out.
Thank you.
A lot and about, and a hundred percent, our principals are amazing. They're what really drives instruction happening, um, in the buildings, and without them, I'm right here, you've given me that look, I was giving me that look again, without them, uh, we wouldn't be doing the things we're doing, so, uh, just kudos to all of our administrators, but especially our principals and assistant principals and deans.
Agreed, any other comments? All right, next item, uh, overnight field trip, can I get a motion?
I move the Board of Education to approve the overnight trip for the Drama Club to the Festbian Festival in Lansing, Michigan.
Second. Any discussion?
We do have Mark here, uh, if he, and I know he'd love to come up and tell us a little bit about it, um, we do have a lot in the latter, but Mark, maybe would you be willing to, if the board would, would like that?
If we have a spare moment, if you'd like.
You're killing me, Smalls.
Hello, everyone, good evening. My name is Mark Fairbrother, I teach Spanish, uh, video, and, and theater at the high school. What I am bringing to you, what I'm proposing to you is a very exciting opportunity, one that proved highly formed for me in my own high school, uh, years I went every year to what is called the Michigan Festbian Festival. It is the Michigan chapter's conference of the International Festbian, uh, Society, and what it is, is two full days, jam-packed days, uh, for students from across the state of Michigan to come together and learn really valuable skills, um, both as artists and performers, um, and technicians, and everywhere in between, business managers, all of the various facets of life in the theater. Every year, it is. Every year, it is an event that attracts more than 1,500 students from across the state who are all highly talented and going on to do great things, many of them in the performing arts, post-graduation, but not all of them. But it is an opportunity for students to work together, to engage in workshops taught by professionals from across the state, the country, and the world, as well as attend scholarship auditions for monies to attend university and be able to pursue musical theater or directing or whatever their particular passion is. And then, again, it's just a great opportunity for students to mingle and bond and learn from one another. And that's really important for me, is for students to see themselves, first and foremost, as part of the Hazel Park community, but beyond that, as part of the greater Michigan community and the global community. And that's what conferences such as this afford our student population. So with that, I am requesting the attendance, the permission to attend the overnight conference, which is on two nights. We will be leaving late on Thursday so that we are able to wake up first thing in the morning on Friday and begin taking advantage of all the resources available to us, and then staying until the culmination of the conference Saturday evening. We'll be returning on district buses, and we would be staying in a hotel that is either within walking or subtle distance from the venue, so we're going to be self-contained, so to speak. But given the financial strain of such a conference for our students, I am seeking support from the district as well to ensure that everyone is able to participate regardless of whatever their family's finances are.
So I'm just going to interrupt us for a second because the letter has been changed from what he originally sent to us, which would be, if we get the grant, that's fantastic. If we don't, we are requesting the Hazel Park School Board to pay for the entire piece without fundraising and without the families paying anything.
Oh, thank you. I applied for a grant. I applied for a grant that would cover pretty much the entire cost of the festival. I am waiting to hear back about it. I've been pestering via email to get some updates, but those updates are not coming as fast as I'd like. But hopefully, hopefully, we'll get that $3,000 grant through Michigan Festivals.
And the total cost of 3,900 without the grant?
Yes.
Okay.
And rest assured that the approval that we're asking for is for you to pay it either way for our students to attend.
So there was a parent portion in here. Are we not charging them that?
We took it out earlier. We updated the letter. I caught it this morning and had it updated, so that there is no parent cost.
To give you a little more information about what a Festbian is, Christie Gardner right here is our Festbian Society President at Hazel Park High School. Our Festbian Society was recently rechartered last year after about 15 years of dormancy. Again, with something that went away with the retirement of Ron Bello back in the late aughts. But we're really excited to bring it back because it recognizes excellence from our students, and we are just continuing to push students to contribute to growing arts within our community and making a footprint, again, both here and beyond, and this is one of those opportunities to ensure we reach that mark.
So to be clear, 3,900 was the, 3,910 was the cost of the entire trip, and I have asked for it to not to exceed 4,000 so that with or without the grant, then the school board would pay for this trip for the kids.
I do have a question, and it kind of goes back to the same conference that we just talked about. It looks like there's 14 people going on field trip, 12 students. There's two adults?
So that is, that is an opportunity, that's an option to be available. If it's simply me, that is fine as well, barring any opposition. But I like whenever possible to get others involved.
I would say that would be an administrative piece, and he should have another person with him. I'm going to agree with that.
Okay, then can we make it not to exceed 4,400, so there, each adult has their own room?
Sure.
Because, I mean, we just did it for the other conference at a room.
No, that makes sense, and it could be a female going.
When is the trip? When is it?
It's September 7th, 8th, and 9th. So we will be leaving the evening after school on the 7th, and then the actual meet of the festival is that Friday and that Saturday.
How much, Dr. Croupy, do we pay on the Washington DC trip?
We don't pay anything on the Washington DC trip. I have one request. If they could bring back a presentation afterwards, that'd be great. What I can say is that when football players or when bowling or when any of the other sports go to the activities and they have to stay overnight, we pay for it. And so this, to me, is, I find arts are no different than our athletics. The Washington DC trip is a different entity that we're going with a company outside and parents fundraise along the way. We did have some members that couldn't pay, and those were helped in many different ways to help the kids go there.
Bandcamp raises their own money for their trip, don't they?
Bandcamp?
Yes, don't they raise their own money for that?
Yeah.
It's here. There is no cost for Bandcamp here. They're here.
Most of the sports do fundraising to cover some of the cost of these extra things.
It is not my understanding of our finances that when the kids went to bowling, that the bowling team had raised funds for that. We paid for an overnight for them. The same thing with the football and the track. We pay for that. The fundraising is for other things, but not overnight.
A single overnight or multiple overnights?
Well, the bowling, we stayed an extra night because of the weather.
I understand what you guys are talking about, and they go through the process and ask about this. But the district is probably able to do the overnight, and if they do fundraise, maybe that one is.
Okay. Well, these meals now are covered in the way that they should. Maybe they didn't choose to do it that way. They're covered through our lunch program with one out, going-out meal. That's perfect. Yeah, we do, we, given the fact that we're CEP, we work very hard to make sure that lunches are sent with the kids as we're able to do that on those field trips.
So since it's in close, in Lansing and it's close, couldn't they come home and save the money since we have to pay the whole amount?
Are you?
Well, that is not.
I'm assuming that the timing of the, I'm assuming that the timing of the events have more to do with the.
Typically, the events will start as early as 7:00 AM and run until 10:00 and 11:00.
I just want to also remind you that when Decca goes to Detroit, just a few minutes away, that you pay for those nights overnight as well for the kids in their downtown Detroit.
A wholeheartedly, my experiences are some of the best for us. But we, this board last month said that we couldn't get a hotel room when we were going to Lansing. We're adults, these are kids.
Well, I think, I think you certainly can, and have that the way it is, but for adults, it's much different than for kids. This is an experience, and we're providing education. So that, it is the recommendation of the administration to fund this trip for the kids. And the board can vote yes and no. That's your right and privilege. Okay, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Uh-uh, it's got to be amended. Whoever made the first motion.
Oh, you're right, because of the, you said 4,400?
Well, just the extra hotel room not to exceed.
Did you want to change your motion to not to exceed 4,400?
Sure. Well, how much is the room a night, 150?
I move the Board of Education to approve the overnight trip for Drama Club to the Festbian Festival in Lansing, Michigan, not to exceed 4,500.
Any support?
I'll support.
Roll call. Bryce?
Yes.
Rete?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Anton?
No.
LaFramboys?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes. Thank you. Enjoy. Can I get my motion for the CAGMIA reinstatement?
I move the Board of Education to approve the CAGMIA reinstatement clause as presented.
I'll second. Okay, discussion on this is that last month, we had conversations about accreditation, and I attended the superintendent's conference, and Dr. Domich and Ms. Kales and Mr. Zernis attended the CAGMIA meeting. CAGMIA is an organization that oversees accreditation now for the state. Hazel Park had accreditation up till 2015 and did not renew that. So you can choose to renew that this evening. We're bringing it to you, and they will give us our stickers back to say that we are accredited. It is not a required piece. What it will do is go through, for six years, there will be an accreditation process. So in the next two years, they will come in and give us a list of things to do, and it's an ongoing six-year process. I believe I mentioned in my newsletter that at the conference, they were presenting awards to people, and Ypsilanti was awarded a national award for utilizing the blueprint across the country for systems and processes that are in place. So our recommendation is to, upon the request of Ms. Hinton, is to go back into the accreditation process. When we pay, you approve it, we pay it, and then every building will get a sticker that was approved before.
Can I ask how much that was? I'm sorry, I mustn't say. The cost of this is $1,200 a school, and that school would be, so I think it's 7,500 now because we would re-accreditate the elementarys, the junior high, and the high school. So how much we get out of it? Well, we put that to 7,500 for the renewal. Not to exceed something. Right, for the renewal.
So do they come in beforehand? Because isn't it being accredited about, like, student growth and?
No.
Student, the grades and everything like that?
No, being accredited is when they come in to see that you have systems and processes in place within your school. So they will come in, they'll do walkthroughs and see how people are teaching, but when we pay our 7,500, Hazel Park Schools will be accredited again, and they will immediately give us our stickers to go on. Then we will go through a six-year cycle of continuing to keep our accreditation and bring on our other schools as well. It's not about how much growth you make or progress you make. It's what you're teaching, what you're doing, what's happening, how you're hiring. The processes that we did before about systems and processes we have in place in our district.
And I'm just going to add on to it. At my son's school, working at Towns College, they would not accept any of his AP credits because we were not accredited. So if you think that 7,500 is a lot, it truly is not because it has a potential to harm our kids if they don't have it.
I'm not sure that that had to do with that accreditation, but this is the first time, this is the first time that I'm hearing that, and so I would have loved to have that conversation because maybe we could have helped that situation. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Rice?
Yes.
Rete?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Anton?
I should have said it during conversation. Thank you, Dr. Croupy, for looking into accreditation. I think it's very important, and yes.
LaFramboys?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes. Classroom furniture, can I get a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education to approve additional furniture, flexible seating, and equipment materials in the amount not to exceed 25,000.
I'll second. Discussion? Dr. Domich?
So last month you, last month you approved the staffing and the addition of a second two-year-old classroom. However, we did not bring the furniture and equipment. So this is really just the furniture and equipment to outfit that second two-year-old classroom. And again, it was a little bit under 25,000 to outfit the first one. As you know, when you have a two-year-old classroom, it's not just desks and tables. You have to have cribs, you have to have changing tables, and some additional resources and materials in there. So respectfully, asking you to approve the furniture and other items to outfit that second two-year-old classroom.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call.
Rice?
Yes.
Rete?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Anton?
Yes.
LaFramboys?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes. Speech-language pathologist, can I get a motion?
I move the Board of Education to approve the hiring of a 0.5 FTE speech and language pathologist.
Christie, discussion.
Hi. So we have identified the need for a half-language, speech and language path. They'll be at the Edison School. The caseload there is showing need for it, and so we're asking to hire.
Any comments or questions? Roll call.
Rice?
Yes.
Rete?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Anton?
Yes.
LaFramboys?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes. Item, is it still F? Can I get a motion on the athletic secretary position?
I move the Board of Education to approve the change for the position of the athletic secretary from 11 to 12 months as presented.
I'll second. Discussion.
So we are seeking the approval to make the athletic secretary a 12-month position. We've had a lot of increase in activity in the athletic department, especially with the junior Vikings and all the summer sports camps that we're doing, and with our athletic director being a 12-month secretary, he would really like to have a secretary with him full-time.
Any questions? Other discussion? Roll call, please.
Rice?
Yes.
Rete?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Anton?
Yes.
LaFramboys?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
We already voted on it, but I just have a question. I know we did vote that someone was going to the junior high. Is that person still? Are we still going to have a junior high person? I thought we voted last meeting to have an additional person somewhere for.
That person, that is a part, that is a position that is supporting our after-school activities and our sports, not necessarily at the junior high, but 6th through 12th, and that position is posted, but it's not a secretary. Yep.
That's the athletic activities coordinator position.
Yeah, yeah.
Still working on it.
Item G, informational. Yes, so we have our Board, Section 1 and Section 2 of our Board policies that was reviewed by the Policy Committee. We bring it here for first reading, for you guys to, as a board, give any input, then for us to take that back to the Policy Committee sometime during the next month, and then we would bring back those changes or any changes that they recommend. I'm going to ask for Mr. Patterson to jump up to the stand to see if there's any questions or concerns that the Board has or input for us.
I have something I want to read, but I have some additions that I'd like to add, so that would be now, after. Sure. Or after he speaks first or whatever.
Oh, he's not speaking. He's waiting to answer your questions because he's been doing the work. So Bab, I would just ask, if you're going to read something, would you give us a copy of that with some of your suggestions? So I don't have to, like, boom, done. Thank you.
I have copies of it all.
Great, thank you.
Well, because this was coming up of our bylaws and our policies, I put together a lot of things that I learned in the workshops from the MASB Roberts Rules and Order and Effective Meetings from the National School Board. And bylaws are the Board's constitution. Bylaws are required by the state. They're pretty much the constitution, pretty much what the Constitution is to the United States. Bylaws are not suggestions. They are mandatory. So then I made a list. Bylaws are the rules for the Board. Policies are the rules for the district, and then guidelines are for Dr. Croupy to implement the policies that we, the rules that we direct. So bylaws should be specifically authorized actions. Bylaws are binding and enforceable. Bylaws are of such importance, they can't be changed without previous notice. Bylaws should never be changed as long as a minority greater than one-third disagrees with the proposed change. And bylaw changes amend the contract you've made with your fellow members about how the Board operates. So you need to be really technical and precise when amending, and bylaws are the heart of your organization. Oh, they, also, I missed one. They help avoid conflict because they are your written laws, basically, for us seven people. So after I sat down and I put everything together, it makes so much sense. And policy, I won't read, but I have copies for everybody.
Policy, what is exactly that you're saying? That this is what you want included, all of what you just said?
No, just that the Board gives real consideration to what's in here and what changes because we, what's in here, we have to do.
Did somebody double-check that besides you? I mean, did Jimmy look at it yet or anything?
Double-check.
Well, so you researched this, right?
No, I just took three workshops at the Oakland County Court with a parliamentarian that just attended a national conference. I also took the workshop in Florida on Effective Meetings. So I can just copy it from the handouts I have, but I just compiled it so it would be smaller. I can photocopy the books.
I would like to see whatever you researched.
I don't see anything that's really.
What I'm hearing is that she just wants to make sure that we are confident in what we put into these because we've got to follow.
we put into these because we've gotta follow them to a T.
That's what I was trying to understand, really.
Yes, that's, that's the bottom line. These are our rules.
So are there, Bev, are there suggestions that you had for these policies that we are doing a first reading with, sections one and two?
I have the, right here. So, continue?
No, go ahead. Uh, we're supposed to ask some questions, right?
No.
Are we not supposed to ask questions?
Bev had some suggestions of policy changes in here, and then I have Jimmy there to respond to any questions you might have based upon, but Bev has the floor, and she was sharing that she had some changes to make.
So, well, I thought the point of it was to get input from the board. The policy committee brings it forward, and then we get to, um, add to it. I thought that's how it goes.
Did you have something you wanted to add?
Um, I have, under, uh, board policies, in addition to these bylaws, the board shall adopt policies, oh, no, that goes down here. Amendment of bylaws and policies is two-thirds vote, not a majority. Because underneath the suspend bylaws is two-thirds. So I think it should be two-thirds to amend them if it's two-thirds to suspend them. Do you want me to put this in writing or copy?
Well, I, I think it's the will of the board, but they might wanna hear, right, what the concerns are. Or we can take it back to policy.
Right, yeah, I'll continue.
Or Bev, I can share it, my weekly update, those pieces, or...
I'll just continue.
Yeah, that's fine, okay.
This is the time.
We all need to hear it, and we all need to make the decision.
Page two, acceptance of oath in office. Elected and re-elected or appointed board members shall file an acceptance of office and affidavit of eligibility as required by state law within 10 days.
Does that board...
So you don't have to look up what the state law is, it's just a simple, within 10 days after you take the oath.
Okay.
And then committees, I thought, you know, there probably could be some discussion on this one. Um, it used to say that the committees, the term was for one year. Uh, that's not in there. I don't know if we need to say committees are for one year. Um, and then it also had, each board committee shall be convened by a chairperson who shall report to the committee and shall be appointed by the president. So we're gonna have, um, so it's saying we'll have a committee, but we won't have a chairperson of the committee, unless you wanna add that.
I see.
Um, so just, that doesn't mean that you wouldn't have a chair. What that means is, if the board would like to put that back in, you can. The purpose that school districts have gone is gone broader, not tighter. And so that may be the suggestion, and then we'll take it to the, the, uh, committee, see what they say, and then bring it back to the board, and the board votes on it. So they're just, these are much broader than our other ones, and that's purposeful with all of them, right?
Oh, yes, they are, they are.
Yeah.
Um, and comply with the Open Meetings Act. It's the same as this meeting, the minutes, and it should comply with the Open Meetings Act, so...
Which section?
Um, sorry, committees, page three.
Hold on, same, well, that, that's implied, probably, you have to comply with state law. Um, you'll see reference to state law. Um, it would be redundant, it can certainly be added, but implicit in that is that at all times, you have to comply with, um, the Open Meetings Act, whether you get together at, at a hotel or in this boardroom.
Okay. Um, page four, I'm, I, I don't know, I'm totally against number two. Duties of the role of individual board members, giving the authority to the board president. When we're all equal in this role, we're all trustees, um...
That, that section mirrors the most recent change that was made several months ago. It's almost verbatim.
Approved by the board.
Which I think I probably voted against that, so I would like to not have it in here.
Bev, you weren't here. I mean, that was voted.
I wasn't here. Well, I don't have to have it in there this time, even though it's what it said.
You can, absolutely, you can express your preference, no doubt about it. That's just as it's written right now.
Okay, right, so it can change.
It can.
Because this is the governance from the MAS B, as the board member, does the board member act in accordance with Michigan law, which does not vest individual board members with any type of independent legal authority? And then there's already seven pages of what we can't receive under the Freedom of Information Act. There's seven pages. So I would like to know what Mr. Nagy might deny us having. So, I mean, it says right here what we can't have. So anyway, I don't, I'm, I'm not in agreement with that part. Page six. What's not in there this time is, um, the law of how you change a regular meeting. And page seven, when you go into close session, number four is listed twice. Number four in the top actually goes under number four in the bottom. It's, it's the exact same thing, but it takes two-thirds, uh, for state and federal statute, uh, disclosure and discussion. Do you see that, Mr. Patterson?
I don't, I'm, I'm not sure I'm following.
Okay, page seven.
Closed session, yes, section eight. It says to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Then at the bottom, where it belongs, it says the same thing. Except disclosure and discussion, the words are flipped.
The, section four, which was added, number four to section eight, the material exempt from discussion or disclosure is, uh, taken straight from the Open Meetings Act. And there's two separate, um, levels that you need to meet, depending on what you're asking to meet about. One requires a two-thirds vote, and one simply requires a majority vote. And the materials exempt from discussion or disclosure just requires, um, majority vote. And then immediately following section four, you'll see the five subsections that do require, uh, two-thirds majority.
Okay, I, I thought it was saying the same thing, and it's not in the Clark Hill example that we were given.
It's not in the Clark Hill example.
Right, yeah, it's not in that.
It put it straight from the open, it's straight from the Open Meetings Act.
So just so the entire board is aware, um, we took the Clark Hill and gave it to Jimmy, as our district attorney, and had him look at the other ones and other pieces, and made suggestion changes. Those changes were brought to the policy committee. So that is an addition that Jimmy felt as our district attorney that we needed to add.
It's just straight, straight from the law.
Well, if you're looking at the Clark Hill's material we received, and it's not in there...
You're correct.
And I see it in there, that it looks double, um, that's why I question it.
I, oh, I, I don't blame you for questioning. It's just, I think it was an omission from the Clark Hill model policies. Um, I'd be happy to supply, I think if you have the...
Okay, I, I'm good with your explanation. That's fine. And then the last one's page eight, under agenda. It used to say, each agenda for regular meetings shall be emailed or delivered to each board member no later than seven days prior to the meeting, so as to provide time for study of the agenda, and 18 hours before a special meeting. And it had consent agenda. There's nothing that we operate with a consent agenda.
So I'm given to understand that the notice of the seven days is just past practice, and since...
It's not past practice.
It says generally.
No, I'm sorry, the, providing Thursday or Friday.
But getting Friday night at four o'clock is unacceptable.
The rule has been in place, uh, since 2000, and they were never supplied seven days ahead of time. They were always...
Well, we certainly can take the input that Ms. Hinton would like seven days ahead of time, put it back in there, but we can discuss it at the policy committee and then bring it back.
It absolutely can be, including the seven days.
But I can say to you, as, as I tried to explain online, is if we do seven days ahead of time, then all those items in between there won't come. And, uh, we are struggling, and maybe it'll be a little different now that the business office will be full and some other pieces, to get those items in. And some items we received last week at the last minute from individuals. So what was originally agreed upon before was, a week before that Thursday, the agenda, we would try to get the agenda out, so if there was anything to be added. And then by Thursday, that we would get it out. I would say it's a 50/50 getting it out on Thursday night, even though Jamie sends those things, because we're running, and something always seems to happen on that Thursday, um, when we're trying to finalize and get it out. And so, but Jamie can't get it out till the memos are there. There was a brief conversation that Melissa and I had today was, maybe we could do what I think Debbie did in the past, which was, Thursday, we can have, when we get the agenda, you put it out there. Then we can open up the board packet, and every time somebody turns in their letters, some are earlier than others, that we put them up there and we upload, so that if you're out looking, you can say, "Oh, I wanna see what's up there beforehand." So maybe that would help.
Did you mean to say Monday and not Thursday?
No, Thursday before.
Th- Thursday a week and a couple days before.
A week in advance is when the agenda comes.
Okay, okay.
And so on that date, as memos come in, Jamie could just put them in there and upload them, so that you could log in and see them ahead of time.
I think it's fair because our committee meetings are normally a Monday, a Monday before, that if like Tuesday, she, Tuesday, and the individual works on getting the minutes out for that, and then gives us something on Wednesday.
I, I'm, I'm gonna just, again, implore the board to hear that there isn't a minute that this administration is sitting down, whether there's an issue that we're going into the schools to deal with, whether there is a parent that's coming in, or something along those lines. I think we all would like to have them done on Thursday, so that on Saturday, um, I'm sure Mr. Zernis did not wanna spend his day writing board memos, but he had been here across, at night, trying to get payroll out. And so payroll on Thursday night, he was here till midnight, or does he write your memos? And so I think we'd have to trust that our central office administration is doing the very best we can to get it out to you on Thursdays. Wednesdays, that just kicks us back more. And so my suggested thought is that we start putting them in as we go along, and you'll be able to see them. And there may be some that still don't get them done, depending on their week. And I certainly would be happy to, in my weekly update, explain why each and every person didn't, but their, their agenda is very, um, filled. And I, I support what was happening last week. Payroll is not an easy piece, and Matt Miller used to fill that, that piece where he would be here finishing payroll, and Jason was doing other things. Perhaps it'll change, probably not at the next board packet, because it'll take a little while to be up and going. So I, I would like to provide that suggestion, to try to see if that helps the board not get them so late, but I, I cannot guarantee you that Wednesday or a week before will happen.
So if we get them a week before, then we take, then we're, have to keep up on them because things will be changing.
If I give it to you a week before...
I'd rather it was settled.
Then the committee items will not be in there, it would go for the next month. So if I gave it to you a week before on Thursday, then all those committee items on Monday, and, and it takes us time. After that's done, we might have to get some other bids, we have to make changes. Tuesday is not just sitting down and writing, we have meetings all day long. So that Thursday, the, the items from the month before would come. And then Monday, Tuesday, those things would happen, and they would go the next month. So if it's due on that Thursday before. And we certainly can do that, if that's the board's will.
I have a quick question, 'cause you said you and Melissa had chatted, and the clarify, I just want you to clarify what you had discussed. You said, putting it out, and then we get updated?
So our board meeting is on Mondays, and, uh, it had been agreed by this board that the, the, and this was before the former board, we really haven't had some of these conversations again, is that on Thursdays, two weeks before, two Thursdays before, that we would have the agenda out to everyone, so they could see and make suggestions for additions. My suggestion is, is that we start working, we'll start working on the next packet right now, we'll start talking about things that need to get put in there. So it might be, I don't know, let's just say, my goals, all right, I'm updating my goals. Then I would, if I have them done, I'm gonna put them in that Thursday that that packet comes out. Or it might be Friday, Jason gets a couple letters done, he puts them in there Saturday, maybe Christie's putting in a new position. But that by the Thursday, we would attempt to upload everything. But along the way, those of you that, um, can't do it over the weekend, that there would be some things along the way that you could look at.
So you're gonna put them in, so it wouldn't have been the Thursday that just passed, but the Thursday before, you're gonna have the agenda there? And then over the course of the week, or week and a half until the meeting comes, you'd be adding things as they come in?
With 100% of the goal trying to be done by Thursday?
By the, by the Thursday right before, so five days or four days around.
But as I've seen for nine years in this school district, there is no one sitting on their hands not doing their job. It is simply that a lot of things come into play because we're wearing a lot of hats.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, nobody's, I don't think anybody's implying that by any means, and we all know that everybody's working hard. It, I think it would just be a little bit easier if it, for me, it would be easier if I had a little bit less at a time, um, just because sometimes if I'm busy on the weekend, you know, and it all comes out Thursday.
100%.
So, I mean...
I wholeheartedly agree with that.
So that was our discussion, uh, when we were chatting about this concern earlier, that perhaps we could try that and see how that works.
Okay, I just wanted to, I didn't understand, I'm like, Thursday to, so did you mean...
That sounded confusing, yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, and I have another question that's back to policy, and it has, it's a general...
Hold on, can it, can we make sure, are you, do you have any more? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So this is just a general question. We have voted to switch to Clark Hill. Do we continue with Neola until all of Clark Hill is approved? Or do we do half Neola and half Clark Hill until, like, so this is the first reading, we make the adjustments, we come back for the second reading, and we approve these two sections? So do we do these two sections under Clark Hill and the rest of the packet under Neola still, or do we wait until every, like...
That's up to you. Um, it's your preference. I think that there's, um, as you can see, I provided you the front page as a...
Um, can I just interrupt? The suggestion would be to do as we did in the past, which would be, we would put the first sections online, because you approved them, which would bind us to support them, and the rest of the sections would be in, would be Neola.
That's, I was just...
And we would remove them as we go along.
Trying to figure out hard work, so, so which policies we need to follow at which times.
And we'll pick up the administrative...
And I would, the, the cover page that you received with the subsections...
Right.
That assumes that, um, that may be subject to change if, if at some subsequent time you don't adopt a section or you increase, um, a subsection. So I think included in the policy you received, it has a table of contents, that we, we would adopt the first 11, 19 pages, but the table of contents may change...
Right.
At some subsequent time. If we address sections 10 and 11, we might move that.
That's, I was just wondering how, how, which policies we follow while we're in this process, and if that's the way we go with that. Thank you very much.
That, that would be my suggestion also. It provides some clarity, and then it also, um, will eliminate some overlap, because you have some sections that cover, that say the same thing four different times.
Anyone else? Suggestions, omissions, discussions? Okay, thank you. Uh, next item is, uh, high school cafeteria improvements. Can I get a motion?
You don't have to vote on, of second reading?
No.
That was information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your hard work.
Um, it's not a motion, is it?
Yes.
Action item, not for, not for policies.
They have the cafeteria improvements and staff bathrooms in action items.
I move the Board of Education to approve the not-to-exceed cafeteria project in the I'm the Board of Education, approve the not-to exceed cafeteria project in the amount of $1,919, or $19,000 and 400. I didn't read that right. One million, nine hundred and nineteen and 400. It's a million.
Can I support?
I'll second.
Discussion, Mr. Zernes? I'm sorry, Jay-Z?
Doc, can you repeat that, repeat that number please again?
I just got tongue tied there, I don't know what the heck happened.
1,919,000, 400.
1,919,000, 400.
Yes.
So this is phase two of our cafeteria improvement at the high school. This did go for bid last year. The cafeteria portion of it, which is air conditioning, adding air conditioning, new roof, or, sorry, air conditioning, new ceiling, new windows and a new university college style cafeteria where kids walk in, go to stations and then walk through like a register area for recording of the Neo Serp. The bid that we received last year was a million eight. So in waiting for this period of time over a year, we were able to add in the staff bathrooms as well as an entryway from the main office into the courtyard that, that the students are operating or having lunch in and, or taking their lunch in. So we went from a million eight, adding in a bathroom, adding in some extra doors and some stuff, to again coming right back to that, a million eight. So I think from that standpoint, we, wise decision last year to push it out this year. So this will be a summer project for next year. And again, it's a million eight twenty-eight with a 5% escalation for contingencies. I mean, I'm sure we're going to get into some of the work on whether it be walls, anything regarding water, you're going to have asbestos, stuff like that, that'll be covered there. So again, just renovating that second phase, renovating that cafeteria and staff bathrooms. Looking forward to it. And again, this is a combined sinking fund, food service fund project.
Any questions? You meant summer of 2024?
Twenty twenty-four, correct.
Okay. Anyone else?
So this is the roof, this is everything, the roof, the door, the bathrooms?
Yes, so if you were to walk in the cafeteria right now, or say in 2020, summer, next summer, you would see a new ceiling, you'd see new windows, you'd see a new servery, which is again station based versus, you know, walking through a line right now. You would have air conditioning in that space. You would have a new door exiting the main office into the courtyard and you would have renovation of our staff bathrooms on the back hall of high school, which are well overdue.
The back hall, what about the one in the office?
We, so the one in the office, when we reviewed that with our architects, for the size of those bathrooms, it was going to be almost a quarter million dollars to redo those two bathrooms and it would be very disruptive because right now they are grandfathered in under the current code in order for us to upgrade them and, and make them ADA accessible. You would, it'd be a complete redesign, you'd have to, you know, you'd have to basically tear the floor up through the office to get plumbing, new plumbing out through into the tunnels. And we just didn't feel it was feasible right now, so.
The, in the Buildings and Grounds did discuss this, I think you were there that we would not be recommending it at this time on this bid. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Rice, yes. Yes, Kenton. Ritchie?
Yes.
Portis?
Yes.
Kenton?
Yes.
LeFrohboise?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes. Thank you.
Oh, next one too? Uh, can I get a motion for the bond consult services?
I'm the Board of Education to approve contract services through Benac, Benac and Cassidy. I'll second.
Discussion, Mr. Zernes?
So as discussed in the Finance Committee, we are looking to move forward with a $150 million bond in the May election of next year. It would be a no mil increase for our residents. And our recommendation to hire Benac, Benac and Cassidy is for them to help us market and communicate the information about the bond to our residents. Again, this would be a qualified bond issuance and voted by the public. Again, the, I think we've had several discussions about the shape of our facilities throughout the district, we could only do so much with our sinking fund. And what this is going to do is allow us to go, basically go through and renovate a lot of our buildings, replace aging HVAC, aging roofs, allow us to do a lot of the door projects, a lot of the safety and security projects that we're looking to do, as well as furniture, flooring, and various other projects that are going to benefit the educational process.
I'm also recommending that we utilize the December workshop to bring our architects and our group in to talk with this group a little bit about some of those pieces that we're looking at. And then we will also begin going around to groups to get their input and ideas. We have one chance to go for this bond and then you'll lose four mils and then you're probably not going to get that added back on. So Jason, how many years, can you talk about the three series that you're somewhat recommending just so that they hear that and then we'll do that into the December meeting?
So again, it's, it's a $150 million bond proposal, obviously the state laws require you that if you issue a bond, it has to be spent, I believe within three years. It has to be spent within a short period of time, so for us to spend $150 million in three years is a little extraordinary. So we are recommending a three series bond so that we can focus on the first, I think it's around 30 million, and then followed by 60 and 60 or a number there up. The first series would be a lot of stuff that is, you know, on the outside of the building, playgrounds, exterior, interior doors, safety and security, furniture, HVAC were needed, especially in Advantage where we don't have any HVAC currently. And then the second series would be potentially a new building and then the third series we would see where we are and what's left to lay out our plan for the district again. We need to have with Amy's suggestion about, you know, meeting in December, we need to have the projects lined up and estimates completed for a qualification meeting at the state level, so.
And it's really important that we have a really positive movement forward for this. Without it, you're probably not going to get the, over the next 10 years, about 10 years, you're not going to get the building updates that this community needs and deserves, especially with this upcoming community, the way it is family-wise and, and support-wise. We look forward to that December. So this is only approving, utilizing the communications specialist.
Did you say vandalized?
Excuse me?
Utilized.
Utilized.
Utilized, I'm like vandalized, if we could vandalize.
I would never, I would never say something like that, no. Any other, any other questions on the consult services? Roll call, please.
Rice?
Yes.
Ritchie?
Yes.
Portis?
No.
Kenton?
Yes.
LeFrohboise?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, Media Center Furniture, can I get a motion, please?
I'm the Board of Education, approve the Media Center Furniture for 26,000. I'll second.
Discussion?
So this is part of a grant that Dr. Domich and Dr. Crouppie have brought forth or obtained. And what this is, is it's just replacing, it's kind of the first phase of our Media Center rebuild. And so what you see in front of you is kind of what you're getting, hopefully you were able to look at it in color. But we're looking at, you know, a couple seating structures that are going to go inside the Media Center for flexible, you know, for the kids to go in, socialize, they can be reconfigured in such a way that you can run a class that allows you to be, you know, in a semicircle around a whiteboard or around a projector. So it's, again, it's, it's the utmost, for what we're getting, it allows us to do the most with the dollars. And again, it's phase one. So what we're looking at doing as well with the Media Center is some additional renovations next summer and this is just phase one.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Rice?
Yes.
Ritchie?
Yes.
Portis?
Yes.
Kenton?
Yes.
LeFrohboise?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Uh, Web Jordan separation doors, motion please?
I'm the Board of Education, approve the Web Jordan separation doors, not to exceed 26,000.
Is that different? This is different.
Okay. Did the other doors go in?
The other doors are in.
The other doors are in?
What doors are you thinking?
What doors?
Doors at four, I think is what, um-
Is that what you're thinking?
No.
No, I thought we got separation doors at Web, between Web and Jordan.
No, we spoke about it in Buildings and Grounds, but we've not brought it yet because we didn't have the plot.
No, I thought it went to the board because it was like they wanted it done over the summer so we could start getting a year with no issues.
We've talked about it, but we've never brought it.
Right, so we did have some discussions about it. The major issue that was surrounding the separation doors were the fire codes. So we were able to meet with the fire marshal from City of Ferndale and we did walk through any of the concerns that they had as well as the concerns that we had. We did make some adjustments with regards to cafeteria or lunches at both Web and Jordan. And so what this is, is the approval of not to exceed 25, $26,000 to put in separation doors in order for us to basically separate those two buildings. These doors would be allowed to be held open if required, but during school day, these doors would, you would be required to use swipe access and it doesn't infringe upon any egress if there were, you know, a fire alarm or an emergency.
My understanding that this has been something, long time coming, even before it became on our radar when they originally moved and made that not a junior high anymore. So I'm really glad that we were able to come up with a solution. I know we have parents that have been concerned for their safety, their little ones, even though we know that we have some adults over there and, and we've not had any issues to date, but I think it's a really good solution. Any other questions? Roll call.
Rice?
Yes.
Ritchie?
Yes.
Portis?
Yes.
Kenton?
Yes.
Yes.
LeFrohboise?
Baldwin?
Yes. Webster Cafeteria Tables, motion please? I'll second. Discussion?
So as we've made programming changes at Webster, we have, in essence, impacted our lunches when we moved them out of the classroom and into the gym. Unfortunately, the tables that were in the cafeteria gym at Webster are quite old, quite difficult to take down and move around. And, you know, we want to make sure that we have a clean and safe environment for our little and these tables are going to replace what we currently have there. And we went through Sheila, and this is age appropriate tables that are going to fit that space.
Any questions? Roll call, please. Rice?
Yes.
Ritchie?
Yes.
Portis?
Yes.
Kenton?
Yes.
LeFrohboise?
Baldwin?
Yes.
Maintenance equipment purchase, motion? Discussion?
So in regards to the maintenance purchases, these are, these are items that are on our three, five-year maintenance equipment replacement plan. The tractor is something we've been looking for, especially with the advent of winter coming up, we want to put, get a snow brush to go with the additional attachments that are already with this tractor, to be able to drive around the district and clean off our sidewalks so that our custodians don't have to be outside most of the day trying to get those cleaned up. So we can have this, you know, lawn tractor do a multitude of things, it's also going to be used at our sports fields and various other locations throughout the district. Our current tractor is, is I think, 22 or 50 years old, Greg? 21. We've, it's, it's, it's in working order, I'm not saying it's not, it's had- It's beat up. And then the lawn tractor, or the mower as well, is something that we're going to probably move over to, I believe, in the unit height. The lawn, the truck cadet mower? United. So, again, items that are on our, again, we're just looking at it from the standpoint of, we can buy new, but if we have an opportunity to buy something that's gently used, let's jump on it and save the budget.
I want to do full transparency that those are mine in my home. Those are much more expensive if you buy them new, but they are gently used. And so before I put them, let somebody else take them, which they wanted, I offered them to the district first so that we could have a great deal. Any other questions?
And just to add that, because of the relationship that Dr. Crouppie has with the district, we did do our due diligence to make sure that the pricing was accurate, looking at comparable used items on the market.
Did we say, and you might have said it and I might have missed it, how old the ones we're buying are?
The zero turn is a year old, the other one is 2020 tractor, the Kubota.
So within five years, all of them?
It's a Kubota diesel.
So it's within a couple of years?
Oh, God, yes.
Okay, that was just checking.
And sent in every year for updates.
Okay.
So the snow plow that we approved, I think, earlier this spring, we're not getting now, so that's off the table or?
The snow plow was purchased for each truck.
Oh, we did get it?
Yeah, in our first truck. We got two piles that I believe are salt sprouts.
So we'll have two snow vehicles?
So we have, currently we have snow piles for all our trucks. We also have two or two salt sprouts? Three salt sprouts?
That go on the trucks.
And they go in the bed of the truck.
Yes.
So the, the tractor is, again, for general purpose throughout the district, but is also meant for a tractor with a snow brush on it to allow, to allow us to do the sidewalks throughout the district. Again, the snow brush is going to, you know, go through a lot of the snow that we get currently. And again, for one individual to drive the tractor around all our buildings or to trailer it, it's going to be way quicker than having all our custodians go out there and blow snow for three or four hours. Not to mention, I mean, it's not, it's not an easy job to go out and blow snow and that is, you know, one of the thoughts that we had trying to make, we're trying to work more efficiently and effectively.
I think we, this is the tractor that we approved to purchase, this off of mine, and then it was, what, 32,000 we approved to do it? Because once you bought the tractor at 25 grand plus the other items onto it, so you're getting this at a, you'll just have to get the brush. I appreciate the disclosure. Does anybody else have any comments or discussion? Roll call, please.
Rice?
Yes.
Ritchie?
Yes.
Portis?
Yes.
Kenton?
Yes.
LeFrohboise?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Uh, next item, student discipline?
I'm the Board of Education, approve student discipline. I'm just signing.
Second. Discussion? Just that we have a variety of students that either had threats, fighting or vaping, that had more than one incident or their incident was large enough that it was concerning to move back to the high school at this time. There's a variety of time periods, some have 180 days, some have 90 days, some have 60 days, depending on the recommendations from the buildings. All of them were recommended to Advantage on this board packet, so they're expelled with the ability to go to Advantage. Any questions, discussion? Roll call.
Rice?
Yes.
Ritchie?
Yes.
Portis?
Yes.
Kenton?
Yes.
LeFrohboise?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Uh, we'll move on to superintendent report.
Well, great. Uh, thank you very much. What a great meeting, a lot of good business done and good input from board members and discussion. So I do have my letter for my first quarter evaluation. What I did is do, this time, I broke it down into, you know, Section A is government and board relations and underneath that is policy development, communication with the board and goal development and materials and background. So really, in those paragraphs, I gave you an update of some of the items that have been done since July to now. Some of those are ongoing and systems that we have very well entwined in place, which I'm really proud about. And so I will do this, the next one, you'll talk to me and then the next one, I'll update this as well, if you remember correctly. So we talked about the policies for policy development and change into Clark Hill policies and also the amount of times that the committee has met in goal development, that we've developed district goals, but we've still yet to do the school board goals, but we do have the superintendent goals and a calendar and our protocol's finished. Communication parameters are all within our items here and in our protocol book that we've updated and re-approved upon and talked about the materials and backgrounds and the things that we've been giving to you through the weekly updates. And I hope those have been satisfactory to you. We've tried to ease through the updates some of the overstress of our administrators and moved our central office to one week and our principals to the next so that they also have some free weekends and are not working so many weekends to get some of those responses back. A comment about board questions and professional development, I think our board has been doing a great job on attending professional development and more to come with the group. The second section on my evaluation update centers around community relations. So in there I have, we've had two coffees with the superintendents and we intend to do another one in November or December. We also, at Open Houses, they have parent input as required by Title I to talk about the title, the pact that they have. And then the talk about our responses to parents through text messages, phone calls. I think we all get many calls all the time. I get instant messages, Dr. Crouppie, will you call me tonight on something that's happened? And we are really working hard on that communication tree to remind our families and everyone that the first line communication starts with the teacher and the building principals. to remind our families and everyone that the first-line communication starts with the teacher and the building principals. I will certainly listen, but I often just move that right around back to the principal because they are the first-line communication of someone knowing what's happening. So we're working really hard on that. I think we have enough people in their areas that I even continue to tell each of us sometimes we have to stay in our own lanes, and trying to do that as well. Our communication with the community, we had another fantastic magazine go out by our communication director, and we plan to have another one in the January, February timeframe going out. And hopefully this time we'll be able to collaborate with the city and get some of their items out. And eventually, it would be nice to have that magazine with the park district, the city, the school district, and the library. So our community can see the collaboration that happens. Also, Chuck does an outstanding job grabbing the community with all the events that are happening and incorporating not only our students, but now our student interns are picking those up as well. So I think our communication is going great. We have the feedback from our parents. We do have the Culture and Climate Survey that's going out through the PBIS and the framework. We additionally have input at the board meetings. And we have staff meetings that are regularly held to provide feedback as well. So, and we will eventually hear, probably in the next month, be going out to the buildings to talk with the teachers about if there's a bond and it passes, what are some of those things that are in there that we have to have in place in January. It's going to be a quick-moving piece. Media relations, I don't know if you saw the fantastic video that our students and Tammy did with Ohio as they're voting on November 7th to legalize or not marijuana. So they did a pretty fantastic job as they came to talk about what the impacts were here in Hazel Park. I think I forwarded it to everybody. And additionally, we will, we had another Gleaners commercial that was done. And I'm sure we're going to have other items, as they call us often, to do and talk back about the things that we're doing. Some people showed her right in here, may have been in that Gleaners video. District materials have been distributed, and we are sending it. When houses are sold, we're sending those materials out to the homes on those district items so that they can see them. Our next best thing would happen would be that we're getting to those homes and knocking on the doors and welcoming those people in the community. And I certainly would like us to find some time to do that so that they can know how welcome they are to our school. I think our administrators and central office administrators are very approachable. No one has a problem, teachers, paras, custodians telling me what they think when they see me out there, or they see me in the community, or they see me at the football games. Getting a lot of input of things to improve upon, and I really appreciate that. Staff feedback, we're getting ready to do a 30-day survey for our new input. And then we'll be doing a 30, 60, 90 day so that our staff can give us, new staff can give us some feedback on what we can approve. Oh, I cannot see what this one is here, but I think it's community relations and personnel matters and delegation of duties. Again, I have to say to you, we're really working on those delegation of duties and having those systems in place that, you know, as you know, we broke off the teaching and learning to Dr. Dolmage, and Jason took over not only technology, but also athletics as well, so that then they are reporting back up to me in a weekly meeting and handing those things down. So we're really working hard to delegate those duties to the appropriate people. Labor relations bargaining this year will be our teachers' negotiations. Our secretaries do not have a union at this point in time, but they are going to a vote to choose between two different unions. And that'll be happening shortly. And then we will probably be negotiating with our secretaries and our teachers this year. So since this started in July, we really haven't negotiated with anyone. So there wasn't any more labor relations to go through. But we do meet every other week with our teacher president, and I think that's been pretty great. I continue to try to get out as much as I possibly can in the community, getting to volleyball, football, junior biking, the cheerleading competition that occurred at our building, and other community events, open houses. I'm looking forward to get to Ford Field on November 4th to watch our band perform at States again. And then budget development, I think we've started our budget. I think we'll be doing some more budget development and looking at projections over the next couple of years. We have some pleasant surprises coming in with $31A, a little higher than what we thought. And so budget's going to be looking great. And then budget reports to the board, financial controls. We do have good financial controls. I'm reviewing bills as they come in, then they go to Jason, then they go to Elizabeth, and now they will go to our new business manager as well. Our facility proposals that will be coming to you and discussed at the December workshop meeting. I think some of that has already been approved through those plans. It'll just help us move a little faster to get some of those roofs and other items that really need to get done in some of those buildings, upgraded heating and air conditioning, so that either you're sweating or you're freezing with some of our heating and air conditioning in the buildings. We're looking forward to that. Our entire teaching staff is up and going on evaluations. If you read my update, you would know that it may very well be that growth will be removed from the teachers' evaluation. I think it is pretty well spoken that that's going to be removed or significantly brought down, which I think is a blessing for our teachers and staff. Where there's way too much focus on the testing and around that, around someone's evaluation, where it should be coaching inside the classroom about how can we help you be supportive in these days and ages of education. So that's going to be pretty exciting as well. We just reviewed today our institute day coming up in November 7th, but we've had some great institute days and after-school programming and workshops that we've been able to get our people through from special ed to art. I think those have just been magnificent and really supportive. Our school improvement plan is significantly linked to our district plan and linked to what our buildings are working on. So that has been very well done. And we staff communications on a weekly basis out to our staff. And personnel matters have been very well handled by our HR department, as well as supported with our attorney if necessary. Let's see, curriculum instruction, we are focused on science this year and continuing to implement our art reading, especially in the ninth grade. And student attendance is a huge focus for us this year as we are, have goals centered around those. And we will have a committee to look at chronic absenteeism, as chronic absenteeism is really difficult across the whole country. So those are my input on my goals to date. If you have any input or things you'd like me to work on, please do so. This was meant to be a short letter. Before I knew it, it was no longer a short letter and took several hours, kept taking longer and longer than what I thought it was going to take. But I hope that gives you an idea of what's been happening if you didn't get in your weekly updates from July until now. Any questions about that?
I had an opportunity to look, did you send us that letter?
I did send you that letter this morning.
I was saying, did I send it out today and it wasn't there the other day?
I wanted to edit it one more time this morning because it was pretty long. So I worked on it last night till late.
Okay, so I can read, you, whenever you can.
Yes, so you can read it. It was sent to you in a PDF form, and it's uploaded to the packet. So no, thank you for your patience with that. I didn't seem to do anything on Friday or Saturday night. I did on Sunday, so. We also have in the packet for you the numbers for account day, as well as the numbers for currently. And if we look at count day, our numbers last year at this time were 3,092. Now, remember, this is a head count, this is not FTE, and that our count day this year was 3,118. Now, what happens now is that they audit these numbers. Some numbers can be taken away if some of these people are attending other places and such that. Additionally, what we're seeing is that our junior high increased, but our elementary and our high school did not increase their numbers. They all had slight dips in the elementary and larger dips in the high school of about 30-some students. So that's exciting that our junior high went up for the first time in a long time. But now we need to get that high school up and going higher. What we did see an increase in is our Edison had an increase, as well as Jardon had an increase. Advantage has a significant increase, as well as, or Invest has an increase. MCA had a slight dip. So we really need to focus on that elementary school. Webster had a huge increase. And so I do believe what we're going to see is a bubble come through now of the kindergarten to first grade that'll be a little bit higher next year if all these students move into Hazel Park. So a big upage on our early childhood this year, which is what we're seeing across Oakland County as well, is that people are coming back to early childhood now that we've moved a little further away from COVID. Really excited about that. As far as the numbers for this board meeting, we again, another increase of about 30 students. So I think that's what we're looking at right now. Head count is about a 30 FTE increase. Jason doesn't like when we talk head count, but we're talking head count because that's what we do here. He will talk FTE when we get a little closer. Any questions about enrollment? We'll have open enrollment again mid-year, and we'll have a chance to kind of look at those numbers at the next count day to see if we have some increases or decreases. You tend to normally do a decrease in the second one, people leave around the holidays, transition, go to other schools. So we'll see what happens. We're going to shoot for some great things happening and an increase in Hazel Park schools. The other thing that I have on here is that holiday baskets are coming. The packets will go out October 27th, and then October 30th through December 1st is the application period. October 30th to December 13, we'll be collecting food. December 16th is the distribution day. Webb and Jardon will have potatoes. Stuffing will be at Hazel Park Junior High. Vegetables will be at UO and Hazel Park High School. Canned fruit will be at Webster and Edison. And advantage in central office will be PB and J and mac and cheese. So feel free to donate anywhere. We've already sent some donation letters that are out there as well. I'm going to repeat it because I had it here, but coming up on the 26th are trunk and treats. UO has trunk or treat at UO. Webb has it at Webb, and Hoover has it at the high school. So come on out October 26th for those trunk and treats. They're going to be a lot of fun. On Grand Ledge this weekend, the band is there. But then on November 4th, they'll be going to Ford Field, which is pretty exciting. And then, of course, don't forget Clue, I'm going to correct that now, on November 16th, 17th, and 18th. Come out, our drama program is increasing by leaps and bounds, and we're super proud of it. I just want to thank all of you for all you do. I hope you all have a happy Halloween, and that's it for me.
Did you say holiday baskets for the board offices, PB and J and mac and cheese?
And mac and cheese. Yes, they're trying to do meal-wise again, like they did last year, they found it to work. So really get those, again, holiday baskets are for those that live in the Hazel Park, Ferndale community. And so encourage, get those things out to the families. I'd love to see us up to 200 baskets this year. We also fundraisers in the ADK New grant. Oh, I don't want to forget the ADK. It's my email. So ADK, which is our teacher sorority, fraternity, I believe, with the grant. Every month, they will be giving awards to a teacher as they apply. So, and I said every month at the board meeting, we will announce the fantastic award that they did. So this month, they gave Julia Sarat, who is a EI teacher at Hoover Elementary School, K through 5, so special education teacher. She gets the first monetary grant from ADK New. She gets $50 for additional classroom supplies for her students. So pretty excited for that, and pretty excited that they're able to bring their grants back to the table for our students. So thank you to ADK. Now I'm done.
Okay, request for future agenda items.
I have a couple. We didn't approve the Washington truck. I don't, I didn't see that, so.
I believe we did it this summer, but I'll go back and look. I will go back and look.
And then, did the unfair labor grievance get settled?
Excuse me?
Did the unfair labor grievance get settled with the union? Wasn't the?
We should not.
Okay.
So we.
Well, don't we normally have to approve those?
If it was settled, it would send it to you. We would have it approved.
We vote on grievances settlements here?
Yeah.
If we had it settled, it would be here.
Okay, because there was like so many that one time.
Please feel free to call me at any time that you have a specific question. I'm happy to discuss it.
No, I had, any others?
Any other future agenda items?
Oh, what's next? Calendar dates. Do we need to approve these? I don't think we need to approve these, do we?
Nope, they're just information.
Public comment. Anyone wishing to speak for the one-minute public comment portion? Seeing none. Board member, I figure we'll just go this way. So Heidi, want to go first?
Bob and I attended the OCSB dinner, what was it, a couple weeks ago? It was at Birmingham Board Office. It was super nice. It was at Avondale. And it was nice because Avondale's a district that is kind of like the same size as us. Of course, there are differences. But they were, we were talking about phones in school and how disruptive they are. And I thought it was interesting that, I don't know if anybody's been to a concert lately, but you have to put your phone in some concerts in a bag so you can't take pictures or anything. They have that at their schools. So when the kids come in, they have to put their phone in a bag, and the bag automatically locks. And when they leave the building, it unlocks. I thought that was pretty cool. They also said that they have security guards at all their schools, which was really nice, too. And I liked the fact that Birmingham schools had all these cute little flyers at their, when you walked in, just about the board, early learning education. And they did have a strategic five-year plan, which was really cool. Just a good reference and a good presentation of it in this little booklet. They also had like, I can't remember if they had it there or we were talking about it, like emergency bags of food set out. So if someone needs quick food, they can come in, just walk in the door and grab a bag and leave. And then they had COVID tests sitting out, too, if anybody needed a COVID test, without trying to call somebody to get one. They had them all laid out on the table so people could just come into their board office and grab one. And I thought that was really nice. It was a very good meeting. We played a game about whose roles are whose, and we tapped out. We couldn't play anymore because we won too much at our table. And so it was fun. It was nice talking to other board members, and we talked a lot about the growth, getting eliminated. So that was a good thing. And happy Halloween, and everybody be safe.
So I have Oakland Schools on here, too. They sent us a recording of all the presentations. So take some time and look at it because it was really good. And they spoke on the statewide infrastructure that they're trying, it'll take a few years to get through, but some money that we wouldn't have to be doing the bond sort of thing. They had writing protocols, trust. We got keys, keys to success is trust, and those were really cute. Trustee communication, social media, handling parent concerns. So anyway, the videos are, you can watch them. They sent them to everybody. And I just have to thank the principals for always putting our kids first and having their best interests at heart and for their consistent attendance because kids need to know when they come in who they can count on, and our principals are always there. And a shout out to the athletics and the band, to the dance team, to the cheer. Our kids are just, they're fantastic, and they're involved in a lot of good things. The drama, don't forget the drama. They're just good activities and good kids involved in all of those. They make Hazel Park shine. That was one thing they'd always say, they would take our kids somewhere and come back and say, we just get praised every place we take our kids, they just brag on us. And then, you know, this drama, I think she said, was it $12 for a ticket? Made me think of, we used to have the gold cards for senior citizens. Do we still have those?
We do not, but the gold cards were for athletics that we did nine years ago. You might have done them earlier. And I have talked, actually, at a football game, there was an alumni behind us that said, hey, where are those gold cards for the football games? And so I talked to Tom, and so we'll be bringing those back around again.
They used to have them for, they had them for everything because his community rep was in charge of giving them out. So anyway, I thought that was a good thing to bring back, and so happy Halloween. And hard to believe, we're heading into the winter season and the turkey time and all those things. But have a good night, thanks for hanging out.
Tom?
So at the last meeting, Brad, can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Okay. At September's meeting, we had a gentleman come from West Bloomfield and smoked, or I'm sorry, spoken our open comments. And after some reflection, I was pretty upset about it because it was derogatory. So I just, I was remiss by not defending you guys after he said it in my closing comments. I should have said that you guys lived this. I mean, you, I respect you tremendously, and I'm thankful for everything that you do, all your hard work, your dedication that you put into our kids. I'm honored every day by your ingenuity and perseverance. Ignore those that have a lot to say with no involvement in our community. Don't forget, you are here every single day for every single challenge with our kids, and you're the experts here. So I don't know why a guy from West Bloomfield will come here to tell us what we should be doing. So I was kind of shook up about it.
Anything else? Anything else?
For everything.
Monica?
A couple things I had from the junior high kiddos. They just want to say they're super excited that Mr. Barnett is allowing them to wear costumes on Monday because they have their Halloween Dance Monday. Mr. Barnett was not a huge fan of costumes, but with a little bit of chatten, we got it to work out. Also, the potential football boys from the junior high were very excited that Tom came over and brought them pizza since they didn't end up having the season. So he took it upon himself to get them after school one day, got pizza, they got to hang out. And even though they didn't have a season, it still just made him feel special that Tom did that. So I just want to commend Tom for that. The cheer-off Saturday was very, very long. But I cannot, without a doubt in my mind, commend Janice Howard enough. I mean, she was there Friday night till almost midnight. Me and her were back there at five-thirty in the morning Saturday, and we didn't leave till after seven. So I just, I mean, she just went above and beyond and worked hard all day and all night. And I just, I thank them very much because it still turned out to be great. It was wonderful. Little hiccups, but it was wonderful. So the kids were happy, the girls were smiling. I'm just, I'm happy that how it turned out. Also, the junior high basketball girls have two games left tomorrow at Power Middle School at four-thirty, and then Thursday at Vermont and Steen. I know we mentioned trunk or treat, but Webb is my beer. So I have five-thirty, six-thirty at Webb. I want to thank the Knights of Columbus for coming. I've known a couple of them since I was a little baby, grew up across the street from Mr. Parady, so I love seeing him at all the sporting events. It's great to have him around, so. And lastly, I just wanted to say that my board visits with Rick and Amy have been wonderful. I've learned a lot more, and I can't wait to finish them. So thank you very much for taking your time to do those for us.
Debbie?
I just have a couple things. I'm really excited about the play, Clue. I love mystery, so this sounds like a really my thing. And I hope that they have a lot of fun on their field trip. Because again, experience is a great teacher. I can't read my own writing. This is a question kind of for the audience. I want to say, is the dance competition in December? December second. Well, good luck to our dancers. I knew it was coming up, kind of. Oh, we talked about, this is my, I think, the magazine that Chuck put out. It was on my table at home, and somebody was visiting that from Hazel Park. And they picked it up, and they started filming it, and they said, oh, my gosh, this is so fabulous. So kudos to Chuck.
Yeah, kudos to Chuck. I always think how fun his job is, and I'm jealous. I wish I had his job, but I don't think anybody could do it better than Chuck, so thank you. We had a safety meeting a couple weeks ago, and yes, there was low attendance. But it was, I encourage parents to go because there was a lot of questions answered and a lot of feedback from our staff. And I'm going to get emotional because this affects me personally. However, I just want our security staff and our teachers to know that when I think of my kids being at school, I know they're safe, and I'm not going to point anybody out, but I think about all of you individually and how I'm thankful that you're there every day for not only mine, but for all of our kids because you make them want to come to school. Those relationships are important, and I think it makes them feel safe, so thank you. Aside from that, yep, what is it? Truck or treat this Saturday. Hope to see you all out. Thank you for, this was easier than I hoped. I was getting nervous before board meetings, but this was easier. I think it went smoothly, so thank you. I think that's it. I hope I don't forget anybody, but have a good night.
Groopy?
I'm great.
Motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn?
Well done, well said.
Thanks. Meeting adjourned.
The gab will suit you.
What's that?
I said the gab will suit you.